It's 7:00 a.m.
And, uh, yeah, we're gonna go all day long.
You heard me?
Giving away the most money in Philly.
At Barbera's on the Boulevard.
Ladies and gentlemen, serving ladies and gentlemen.
That's the Barbera story. And that's why with every discounted Dodge, Chrysler, Ram, and Jeep Jeep, Gary Barbera is making a generous donation to help support Fox Chase.
Is Barbera the best?
Boy, I guess.
What's up? It's Buster with Xfinity. You know, Xfinity Mobile gives you the best coverage, more flexible data, and awesome savings, all on the most reliable network that saves you money on your wireless bill without compromising on your coverage, okay? So you can choose unlimited, shared data, or mix both and switch it up anytime, all online, so you only pay for what you need. No one else lets you do that. Plus, 5G is included with all new day options at no extra cost. Only with Xfinity Mobile, you switch and save up to $400 a year. So get that unlimited 5G included for just $30 a month per line when you get four lines on the nation's fastest, most reliable network. Learn how the Switch Squad makes it easy for you to switch to Xfinity Mobile and Internet together to save hundreds. Visit today, go to XfinityStores.com to book an appointment at a time that works for you. Restrictions apply, compares pricing of top carriers. Xfinity Internet required, most reliable based on Root Metrics. U.S. report results vary, not an endorsement.
Breast implants are designed to last a lifetime, but after 10 to 15 years, you may have concerns, be unhappy with the way they've changed, or simply a peace-of-mind checkup. Schedule a virtual consultation with the top South Jersey plastic surgeon, Dr. Lyle Back. Go to ILoveLyleBack.com to schedule your appointment.
Level up your fitness routine, work out with friends, and get live feedback from world-class instructors with NeoU, your one-stop shop for digital fitness. For the unbeatable monthly price of just $499, NeoU offers 24/7 access to on-demand, interactive, and live workouts on devices you already own. Sweat with the pros, get results, and feel great for only $499 per month. Start your 30-day free trial by entering promo code IHEARTS at NeoUFitness.com. That's N-E-O-U Fitness.com.
Ever feel like you were meant to do something more?
Get where you want to go with a Wilmington University education.
Ready to make a move? Wilmu works.
Find out how at Wilmu.edu.
If you're expecting a baby, you can expect the best from Virtua Health. That includes the experience that comes from celebrating over 8,000 birthdays last year, more than any health system in Southern New Jersey. Expect a personalized maternity experience as you choose from a compassionate family of care that includes over 50 OBs and midwives, as well as high-risk expertise if needed. Explore Virtua Health and expect everything you're dreaming of and more. Visit Virtua.org/Birthday. That's Virtua.org/Birthday.
To celebrate State Farm's surprisingly great rates, we gave this song surprisingly great lyrics.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 18th, 2021 Board of Supervisors Work Session. We have one agenda item this evening, and that is the presentation of the 2022 Manager's Recommended Budget. At this point, I'd like to introduce Michael Lewis, our Township Manager, and Catherine McGovern, the Assistant Township Manager, and let them do their presentation. And I would ask maybe Mr. Lewis, if you could let us know who's sitting in the room.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm joined this evening by, as you said, Catherine McGovern, Township's Assistant Manager, sitting to my right, Chief John Hearn, Township Police Chief, Gene Tanner, the Executive Assistant to the Police Chief, Joe Shavoni, Public Works Director, Chief Glenn Forsyth, Emergency Services Chief, Megan Przynski, Park and Rec Director, Olivia Kavenco, Executive Administrative Assistant to Manager's Office, and Teresa Halper, Finance Director. I would like to thank all of the department heads and staff that have helped put the proposed budget into its final version. The budgeting process is a tedious process, and the level of detail that has been provided by staff is genuinely appreciated.
Mike, sorry, is your microphone working?
It's on, yes.
Hard to hear you. I'm getting old, so can we up it the amplitude or whatever? Thank you.
Is that better? The 2022 budget is being presented, is developed with the intent to advance the operation in a level of services the community has come to desire and to expect. The five-year financial plan prepared by E-Consult Solutions has been used as a guide in the preparation of the manager's budget and continues to incorporate recommendations of the consultant. Some of the highlights of the 2022 budget: the completion of the Lower Dolington Trail segment, which is a major improvement along the corridor; addition of one full-time police officer; addition of one full-time deputy fire chief in the Emergency Services Department; and a new fire chief's vehicle to be planned from the purchase from the Fire Association Capital Fund; purchase of three police patrol vehicles; the finance purchase of two Public Works utility vehicles; and one park and recreation pickup truck; consultant to provide part-time zoning and code enforcement services; the finance purchase of police body cameras; and the finance purchases, purchase of updated police records management system, otherwise known as CODI; finance purchase of software to support the finance, codes, and zoning administrative offices to offset aging and obsolete infrastructure; Police Department facilities studies to assess the current and future building needs; approximately 3.11 miles of road work to be paved, not including additional alternates; a slight tax increase of 1.5 mils is proposed to the Fire Protection Fund. No other taxes are proposed. A summary of the funds. In 2021, the township allocated 4.5 mils of real estate tax to offset losses in revenue and to support and expand current operations in line with the five-year financial plan. In 2022, there is no tax increase proposed to the General Fund. Revenues are budgeted to rise 3.7% in 2022 from $12,722,257 to $13,193,088. Additionally, there is an estimated fund balance forward amount of $2,995,785 for a projected total revenue of $16,188,873 available in 2022. As in previous years, earned income tax continues to be the predominant source of revenue in the budget. In 2021, total year-end collection is projected to be $6,970,250. The anticipated collection for 2022 is $6,930,000. Real estate transfer tax is expected to remain strong in 2022 based on strong market conditions and anticipated residential housing growth. The anticipated collection in 2022 is $800,000. The Township Parks and Recreation revenue were hit hardest by the effects of COVID-19 pandemic in 2020, generating $230,000, or 39% of projected budget revenues. As to be noted, our estimated Parks and Recreation revenues have rebounded and are expected to reach $550,000 by the end of the year. This figure is a testament to the dedication and perseverance of staff in that department in an ever-changing environment. The 2022 revenues for Recreation Programs are estimated to be $530,000. Expenditures are budgeted to rise by 5.37% to $14,554,818. Expenditures are largely driven by personnel-related costs, operational expenses, one-time capital purchases. Salary increases for at-will and bargaining employees are budgeted at 3%, which is also in accordance with any existing contracts. The detailed schedule is outlined as Schedule C in the budget. The township has a total of 69 full-time employees, 36 of which are in the Police Department. The 2022 budget contemplates the establishment of several new positions, several which are in accordance with the ESI five-year financial study, which include re-establishment of a second lieutenant in the Police Department. This position was budgeted for and not filled in 2021; the addition of one additional police officer; ongoing promotion of supervisors within the Police Department. This was also budgeted for 2021 and not fulfilled. These include the addition of two additional sergeants and two additional corporals; the establishment of a deputy fire chief. This will be paid from the Fire Protection Fund; and the re-establishment of a consultant to serve as part of the part-time zoning and code enforcement officer. As a contracted position, there are no benefits associated with this role. The part-time Township-employed zoning officer position was eliminated in 2020 as part of the COVID-19 reductions. Investment in capital expenditures is proposed at $630,531 in 2022. Capital expenditures were reduced in 2021 to avoid the implementation of additional real estate taxes. Budgeted capital in 2019 was $663,258. The 2022 budget returns said capital expenditures closer to previous thresholds. Capital projects are included to enhance the safety of the public and staff, maintain proper infrastructure, and provide recreational opportunities. Highlights include the finance purchase of records and accounting software for the Police and Finance Departments to replace obsolete systems, as well as the finance purchase of police body cameras. Additional vehicles in Police, Public Works, Park, and Recreation have been budgeted to maintain an aging Township fleet. A facility study is proposed for the Police Department to ensure that the building space can meet the departmental needs. Finally, the General Fund, as in 2021, is proposed to contribute an additional $300,000 to supplement the annual road program. The budget also incorporates funding to upgrade the Township's outdated phone system with a voiceover IP system. Mr. Jim, if I could have the first slide up on the screen, please. Historically, Newtown Township has relied upon existing fund balance to offset the budgeted deficits in the General Fund. In 2021, the General Fund is expected to experience a surplus. It should be noted that this is largely due to postponement rather than elimination of capital purchasing and staffing changes. Additionally, the cost of personnel, contractual obligations are expected to increase, which will need to be addressed in future budgets. The budgeted deficit in 2022 is anticipated to be $1,361,730 compared to the $1,089,827 in 2021. The policy of the Township is to maintain a 10% fund balance forward in the General Fund. Should the budgeted deficit in 2022 be realized, the Township may not be able to rely upon fund balance reserves to offset future obligations. Additional revenue in the form of a tax increase may be necessary in 2023 to maintain the current level of operation. The 2022 budgeted fund balance forward equates to approximately 11.23% of expenditures. I'll just go through some of the outlined funds under the budget.
Do you need some water?
No, I'm good. Thank you. The Fire Protection Fund, Fire Protection Fund predominantly pays for command staff and employees of the Township Emergency Services Department and contributions to the volunteer Newtown Fire Association. It is anticipated that salary and benefits for the fire chief and deputy, and proposed deputy fire chief will be paid from this fund. The budget also proposes to increase the contribution to the Newtown Fire Association to $330,000, with the anticipation that the NFA will enhance their volunteer incentive program to ensure adequate coverage for weekends and holidays. The fund also anticipates a contribution to the Fire Association Capital Fund of $150,000 to set aside for future capital purchases. There is a proposed increase of 1.5 mils of real estate tax for a total of 2.5 mils to support the Fire Protection Fund, as outlined. The American Rescue Fund has been established. However, no expenditures are projected for 2022 at this time as the final rule has not been authorized by the U.S. Treasury Department. The 2022 budget maintains .05 mils to the rescue squad. The 2022 budget maintains a fire hydrant fund millage of .615 mils for the payment of hydrant fees and maintenance. In 2017, the Township refinanced the 2012 bond for the municipal complex with a fixed-rate loan of 2.51% with TD Bank. The 2022 payment equates to $673,992. That's outlined under the Debt Service Fund. Capital Project Fund is supported by transfers from affected funds and grants revenues for projects of $25,000 and greater. In 2022, it is anticipated that all capital projects will be supported by the General Fund. The Recreation Capital Fund, revenues for the Rec Capital Fund are obtained through grants and developer contributions as fees in lieu. In 2022, an MS4 project for stream bank stabilization at Clark Nature Center is proposed, and a potential matching grant may be available through DCNR. Fencing enhancement at Helen Randall Park to replace aging fencing are included, and the Lower Dolington Trail is expected to be completed in 2022 and the associated grant revenues received. Transportation Service Area Funds, there is no activity proposed for 2022. Highway aid and road paving. Total revenues in the Highway Aid Fund are anticipated to be $764,766. That includes a $543,970 liquid fuels contribution from the state. The fund pays for winter maintenance and operating supplies, paving, rock salt, equipment, and some engineering costs. The 2022 budget contemplates maintaining the allocation of $300,000 that will be dedicated to road paving from the General Fund for a total 2022 road programming budget of $830,000. Can I have Slide 2 up on the screen, please? The proposed road program includes the following: the base bid of 1.87 miles with a cost estimate of approximately $387,879. This includes 12 roads. Next slide, please. The anticipated alternate bid, we'll just call it alternate bid 1, is the roads that are inside, within Devonshire Estates and Nob Hill. These roads were recently affected by the Sewer Authority recent project. Those roads consist of 1.24 miles with an estimated cost of $358,470. It consists of four roads. This leaves a remaining $83,651 that we can allocate towards a quote bid alternate 2, which would make up additional paving of approximately about half a mile. This additional $83,000 would increase the total mileage of road paving by potentially another half mile. With 71.3 miles of road and an average 20-year lifespan, the Township would need to average 3.56 miles of road paving per year to repave each road every 20 years. As anticipated, the Township will reach that goal, as outlined above. Also included under the Highway Aid Fund is the proposed purchase of a hot box asphalt recycling machine for approximately $45,000. This machine will be utilized for recycling asphalt millings into reusable blacktop for pothole and patch repair of roadways. Let me get the final slide up on the screen, please. This slide's become familiar over recent years. This shows the chart depicting millage rates and estimated annual revenues for nearby towns with EIT for residential dwelling within Newtown Township's average assessed value of $38,922. This slide includes the millage increase for a total of 9.99 mils. I think it's important to point out that Newtown Township's millage equates to approximately $388 a year in revenue. Whereas if you look further to the right, you can see the school district revenue of up over $5,000 for an average household. So I think some of the confusion came into last year when people were realizing that there was going to be a tax increase. However, they didn't fully understand that the majority of their taxes go to the school district and/or the county. There are several departmental requests that were excluded from the manager's budget. Through the 2022 budget development process, certain departmental budget requests have been reduced or eliminated. These requests included additional staff within Police, Public Works Codes, Information Technology and Communications, and the Emergency Services Department. Additionally, capital purchases, including additional patrol vehicles, park and recreation amenities, computer infrastructure, and video surveillance enhancements have also been eliminated from the proposed budgets. These needs may be revisited in future budgets as necessary. As far as timing and adoption goes, the preliminary 2022 budget needs to be advertised for a minimum of 20 days before it can be adopted by the Board of Supervisors. It's recommended that the following schedule be included for adoption, so that the way it pans out this year would be, the preliminary 2022 budget would be adopted sooner before November 10th, with the final adoption sooner before December 8th. This timeline can be altered at the Board of Supervisors' discretion. At that time, that concludes my report, and I'll be happy to take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. I just would like anyone, any of the public here, anybody listening at home, just know that we got this on Friday, as planned, and right on time. And some of us had busy weekends. I know I was out of town for months of the weekend. So, you know, I might have more questions after this evening. I don't know how many questions the other board members have, but I'd like to, I'll go last. So whoever would like to go next? Who would like to go first? John? Kyle? All right. So one thing, I thought we would alternate. So the first round of questions, you get five. And it's not as formal as it seems. But ask your first five questions, and if anyone else has five questions, then we'll go back for a second round, if we need to.
Okay. Let me see my notes here. Going back to the road program, something I'm always interested in because I travel roads on my development. Like, one of the drives there has been pretty bad shape, and I see it's not on the list. But you're talking about 3.11 miles of roads in the base bid and the alternative 1 bid. Can you explain the reason why you have base bid, alternative 1, or alternative 2? But I would note that whatever, your total is 3.5, 3.61. And what that gives us is just maintaining the roads as they currently are. It's not getting us ahead of paving more roads, because then the roads in my neighborhood, for example, would still be in very bad shape. And I'm sure there are many other neighborhoods where the roads are in bad shape that are not included on this list. So every time you pave 3.6 miles, yeah, you're just staying where you are in terms of the overall condition of the roads in Newtown. So can you explain, though, how this bidding process works?
Sure. So keep in mind that we did have the roads in Devonshire and Nob Hill on this year's road program. However, there was an issue with the contractor and the Newtown Sewer Authority, so we had to remove those roads from the paving schedule this year. So the strategy for next year's road program is to keep a relatively low base bid, which is what you see in that 1.87 miles of proposed roads, with the intent of bidding one alternate in Nob Hill and Devonshire. In the event that there's an issue again next year, we can just reject that set of bids, and then we can move on to paving more roads under that bid alternate 2, over that $83,000. So with the, so theoretically, say, everything goes as planned. We do bid, base bid for the 1.87 miles. We do, we include the roads in Nob Hill and Devonshire, which is 1.24 miles. We still have an additional $83,000 to award other roads to increase that mileage closer to that 3.56.
This all assumes that the companies that make bids are within your estimates.
That's absolutely correct.
And I've heard that asphalt prices are continuing to rise, and that there's a supply chain problem. There's a problem with the truck drivers and so on. So, you know, I hope this is, comes to be, because I think last year, we only paved, what, two miles of road?
2.07 miles. And then, and that essentially is because of, we had to work with the contractor because we didn't have those bids broken out as alternates. So we couldn't award, under the state bidding requirements, you cannot award additional work without rebidding the whole project. And by the time we were able to rebid that project, that's when the escalated costs had kicked in, and we would have ended up with less miles of road.
Well, so there's money left over, is what you're saying. From the budget, we didn't spend all that money, I guess.
So, correct. However, at the end of each budget cycle, all that money gets redistributed into the General Fund. We only spent $164,000, I believe, off the top of my head from...
So we don't have a road paving fund, per se?
No, we do not.
So with that excess money, that money that we didn't spend last year, we couldn't have put into a fund for this year? That's what happens because of that? You put it into the General Fund to spend on whatever?
Right, because it's General Fund money. It all rolls back into one pot to be redistributed.
Why don't we have a specific fund for road repairs?
That is one of the things that's entirely up to the board. If the board wishes to establish a tax...
We used to have that. We used to have a one-mil tax.
That was to repay a loan.
Okay.
It wasn't a dedicated millage.
So now, we could come up and say, we would like a dedicated road repair fund, so that if that would happen again, we can repurpose money from last year into the fund and make up for it this year.
Under the Second Class Township Code, yes. You're okay with that.
And, and then you could have a fund balance at the end of the year that we carry.
That's correct.
I know you said that most of, uh, this increase, uh, in the budget has to do with, um, personnel. And you went through this and I would like to find out more about why we need a deputy chief, uh, because I know that the chief had a pretty good salary increase last year precisely because, uh, we were told he's taken over, look, you know, looking after both the paid firefighters and the volunteers. And he deserved that. Uh, but now I guess he tells us, if the chief wants to talk about it, uh, that he needs a deputy. What, why does he need a deputy at this point?
So Chief Forsythe is in charge of fire operations within the township for twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year at this point. That is unsustainable. So what is proposed, um, as part of the contribution to the NFA, for them to develop a recruitment and retention program is essentially the last step before, uh, this township is going to need to go to seven-day coverage. If we move to seven-day coverage by paid firefighters, they're going to need supervision.
Well, we don't have that yet.
We don't have that yet. However, we don't know how far off that actually is.
Well, I, I, I'm just, you know, hasn't changed. His duties haven't changed this year versus last year or next year versus this year as far as I can see. And you're not hiring any new paid firefighters. The, the three hundred and thirty thousand dollars you're giving to the NFA, what's that going to be used for? Again, I mean, you're, you're talking about, you mentioned that that's going to help somehow coverage on weekends? How does that work?
That is up to the NFA.
It's up to, so we're approving three hundred and thirty thousand without knowing exactly how the NFA is going to spend it?
You can ask for reports from the NFA of how they're going to spend it.
Can we ask for the NFA to tell us now how they intend to spend it?
I don't know if you, I don't know if they're prepared to speak to that right now.
Can we put this in the, for future answer? Um, I know you said that we can have questions answered.
Yeah.
At a, in the minutes later.
Point about, um, what are that, um, that, that three hundred and thirty thousand is one, if my calculations are correct, it's a one hundred and seventy, one hu, one hundred and seventy thousand increase over the amount that's, we gave last year. We gave one sixty last year and now we're saying it would be a, basically a doubling of that. And, and my understanding is that it's for relief funds for paying firefighters to be available on evenings and weekends or, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, and, and that is a, not only a, a countywide po, problem of getting enough volunteers, but it's a, a statewide problem and I dare say a national problem.
I realize it's a problem. I'm just trying to get at the numbers here. Last year you cut the, uh, cut it by fifteen thousand dollars. I wasn't very happy with that. It was a hundred and seventy-five thousand. You cut it to one sixty thousand.
We did.
Well, I voted, I didn't like that and that's why I didn't vote for the contract that, uh, was proposed because that was part of the new contract. Okay? I didn't vote for that, uh, just for the record. And I'm wondering, how do we pay volunteer firefighters? Is that possible? I mean, you said, uh, you, you know, it's up to them, but is it possible to pay volunteer firefighters to cover the weekends? I thought that was not permissible. Can we talk to the chief maybe on this?
Sure. Chief Forsythe, do you want to come up?
Good evening.
Good evening.
The extra money will be to provide the stipend program for the volunteers to cover at least ten to twelve hours both days on the weekends. That's approximately fifty thousand dollars. The, also the increase is for the reduction in the last couple of years, the Fire Association needs the appropriate amount of money to operate. Currently, they pay for everything on both buildings. They pay for the apparatus and they also pay for the fuel that we use on a daily basis. So I'm requesting that the Fire Association's money is increased because they're basically footing the bill.
So you mentioned the stipends. That's not like a salary or anything, but that.
No, sir. It's a stipend program. Currently, our firefighters, our volunteers get paid five dollars per call, whether they're out ten minutes or whether they're out five hours, they get five bucks.
But is that what we're proposing for the weekends?
No. We are proposing that we pay two volunteers to be available to respond immediately from the fire station. They will be actually in the building and that would be around two hundred dollars per person per shift.
And is that, uh, something that we have to apply for, like a grant or something?
No. Uh, this is totally separate. The Fire Association maintains this, uh, stipend program and it's taken care of by the Fire Association and it's the township, I think it's the township's responsibility to help support this stipend program.
You're just proposing that for this year or is it going to be every year? Next year and then years after.
I would say it's going to go on forever until there are no volunteers left. I mean, we're to the point now where we're scurrying. As Micah said, I'm, I'm here twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. If the pager goes off on a Sunday night, I go and we don't know how many people are coming with us. So our projection is to start this stipend program and try to encourage the volunteers to come out and receive the stipend to respond to the calls and be in the building to respond to the calls.
But you, you still have to get them to volunteer to do this. It's not like when you hire somebody, you said, be there.
You're absolutely correct.
And is that going to be a continuing problem? I thought that was the main problem. That people are just too busy on weekends or at night.
Well, that's part of the problem, but we're going to staff the building with two firefighters. They will respond immediately. Uh, myself or the duty chief will respond with that crew, so there'll be a three-man crew responding to the call. That's our projection to make sure we have coverage during the daytime hours on Saturday and Sundays.
All right, thank you. Let me, uh, let other people have questions if we can come back around, I guess. Is that okay?
That's fine. That sounds good. Thank you.
Chief, just one quick question. So you're, I know there's a discussion about a deputy, um, and to give you coverage. Are you saying that you don't ever take a break, holidays, vacation, or any of that stuff? That you, you're not, you're not doing any of that?
I live two miles away. When the pager goes off, I go. Whether it's a Saturday or Sunday, nighttime, holiday, it doesn't matter.
Okay. Okay. And that, and that potential deputy would be, one, to assist our township in a better way to be more, make sure we're much more safer, but also to give you a little bit of what we all enjoy as a time off.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Oxley, for now? Mike, I guess I have a couple of questions and, and I think mostly, mostly to you, Mr. Lewis. First, I want, I want to say thanks. Thanks for putting the budget together. Of course, that's your, your, your job, but, uh, I, I know there's a lot of bits and pieces, a lot of moving, moving pieces that, uh, you try to get under control. And, uh, thanks to all the staff who helped put it together. I know Teresa's done a great job over the years, uh, with putting the finance together and, uh, welcome Catherine to the process, uh, as well. So, um, my que, my general question is, uh, we have some budgeted items. I, I anticipate and didn't look for every line item, but we have some budgeted items that might be, uh, eligible for American Relief Program Funds. How would that be accounted for if during the, during the coming year, we know that something's eligible and it's on our budget?
So under, under the, uh, Pennsylvania Second Class Township Code, um, by resolution, the board can reallocate funding under the budget structure. So our anticipation in reading the interim rule from the U.S. Treasury is that if one of these items becomes eligible, say, let's just say a police car becomes eligible, which is not right now, but I'm just using that as, as an example, we propose a resolution to the board of supervisors for adoption, reallocating that mon, that money to the American Rescue Fund for approval and we'd include that with the, uh, submission back to the U.S. Treasury when it's required.
So to be clear to some who don't know how this works, the ARPA monies are in a specific fund.
Yes, as, as of right now, the, the one point four million dollars is in a separate fund in the bank with its own set of checks.
Great. And if we can, whenever the federal government gets their, their rules together, uh, then maybe we might be able to make some things eligible. Okay, very good. Let me do one more. There's a, I, I believe there's, I, I believe there's, and, and you can help me with this question. There's a state imposed maximum for the number of mills that can be designated for emergency services. How, how does that work? Where, where are we? I think it said in here somewhere that we're up to two point five.
That's correct. Uh, under this proposal is two and, two and a half mills to the, um, to the Fire Protection Fund. Under Pennsylvania law, it's three mills is the maximum amount without voter referendum. From my understanding, there was a voter referendum. Glenn, do you know, remember when that was? Two thousand and four, to, uh, allow the township to go up to four mills instead of the three.
And that's still?
Still in effect.
Still in effect. Cool. So right now we're up, right now we're at one mil for the Fire Protection Fund. We're proposing, uh, an, an additional one point five.
One and a half, yes.
And we can, by referendum, we, we're allowed to go up to four, but we're not there. Great. I yield the floor for another question from?
Uh, I'll, I have more of a, a comment at this point. Um, thank you, Mr. Lewis, Ms. McGovern, for all the effort in the budget. I know it's a lot of work. And thanks everyone from the departments for coming out and, and participating tonight. I know it was a, a bit of a challenge. I'm going to echo what Mr. Lu, Mr., um, Fisher said a few minutes ago. We just got this a few days ago. There's a lot in here and I'm still trying to get through it all, uh, to come up with some better questions, but right now I don't have any. So, um, again, it's just thanks everybody for all the hard work.
We'll have future time to, uh, ask those questions. Mr. Mack? Yes?
Thanks. Speaking of the, uh, American Rescue Fund, uh, money, uh, we have no idea how we are going to spend it and, um, I think you mentioned if there was an item in the budget that perhaps, uh, becomes eligible, we can shift it to the, to this fund. But there is no item in the budget, for example, improving the video and sound equipment in this meeting room. And I'm just informed by, uh, Mr. Jim from Video Gold that our equipment is aging and the video booth and some, uh, are fifteen to twenty years old. And I know from talking to PSATs and, uh, other legal advisors that that definitely is a permitted use. Yet, how do we get, suppose, I know, I know you want to wait for the government to come out with this final rule. I don't know what the delay is when other, uh, townships are spending money improving their sound systems, their hybrid meetings and so on, using these funds that they received. Why we can't do that while we have to wait for the final rule? But if the final rule comes and you're pretty sure that we can spend money upgrading all the equipment and everything here and drawing the twenty-first century, how do we do that? If it's not in, if it's not in part of the budget to begin with?
So we would, we would theoretically get quotes. We would have board action on a, a public agenda, uh, along with the associated resolutions that would accompany those purchases. And all of those funds would be paid for out of the American Rescue Fund, even if it's not budgeted.
Okay. So we can do that even if it's not budgeted?
Yeah, and it would show up next year, um, under expenditures which aren't included in the budget at this time.
And we also got an email from the rescue squad, ambulance squad, saying that, uh, some of that money could be used for them, although we give them point, what is it? Point oh five mills or something?
Correct.
How much could that be increased according to the law? Can we increase that spending or can't we use some ARPA funds for that?
That would be the same thing. If, if it would just be on a public agenda with a resolution authorizing the expenditure, the amount, and then we would cut the check.
So it's completely possible for us to put this on the agenda regardless of whether or not the federal government has come up with final regulations. We could propose to do that. Is that correct?
That's, that's at board discretion.
At the board discretion? Okay. So I have to talk to my fellow board members about that. One other question about the fire services. I know in the past we applied for FEMA grant, uh, what's it called? SAFRA grant that would cover, because of COVID, it would, a hundred percent, uh, for three years. I forget the number of firefighters.
That's for five firefighters.
Five firefighters. That would cover the weekend. Did we apply for it this year and did we get that grant?
We, we did apply for it. We haven't heard if we got it or not.
Wasn't that, weren't they announced in the summer who got that grant? Nobody was announced yet?
I, I have not. I do not.
We're not on the list.
So we didn't receive the grant.
Are we going to apply again? Is there something that we can do to improve that, uh, application? I don't know. Okay. I look forward to that. Thank you.
I have one or two more questions. Mr. Oxley, do you have anything? Follow-up? I, I have two really quick questions and one, one you've already mentioned a little bit. The, I, I noticed that in your manager's, um, budget report that the EIT collections were expected to decrease a little bit in 2022. And along with that, I noticed that, uh, the parking recreation was a little bit less expected residue, re, residue, revenue for 2022. And, yeah, it, so there, it seems to me that it's a pretty conservative estimate. And, I mean, that may, might just give us a little bit of background.
So the reason why that is the way it is, is because this year's delinquent EIT is already up and above, um, the budget line item.
Okay.
That number is wildly unpredictable. It depends if people pay their EIT in a timely manner or not. So as far as next year goes, we're keeping the EIT or the delinquent EIT resident category at one hundred and twenty-five thousand. It's anticipated to the year-end estimate, we might be over two hundred and twenty thousand dollars in that, in that. So we're, we're budgeting conservatively on that line item. Same with the parking rec, uh, revenues. Reason why is because we don't know where COVID is going if we were to be impacted. So we're, we sort of are budgeting more conservative on those two line items.
I like those, like conservative budgeting. You have a pleasant surprise maybe at the end. Mr. Oxley, do you have another question?
Mr. Lewis, on the, um, parking wrecks, I noticed that obviously we're estimated at the end of year to finish around five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I noticed that, obviously, we're estimated at the end of year to finish around $550,000. And you just mentioned about, you know, we don't know where COVID is going and so forth. But obviously, during, throughout this year, we've had some highs and lows with COVID. Next year, I know this is conservative, but what do you think Park and Rec could do to continually boost those revenues? Because I see that Park and Rec is very important to the township in terms of revenue, based upon it being one, one of the four largest revenue producers for us. What do you think can be done to even bump that up even higher? Your thoughts?
Well, I mean, Ms. Brusinski is constantly looking at new, different ways of, of generating revenue, whether it's with different park and rec classes. The biggest thing that, that may impact those revenues is capacity restrictions. So, we only have certain square feet available in the township buildings where we hold these classes and facilities, and we're not using outside. So, if those capacity restrictions go back up, actually, go back down to where they were earlier this year, that's obviously going to affect the revenue capacity of those programs. Okay.
Any, any thought of, and forgive me, but expanding it, and you're, well, before I say this question or ask that question, are we just here and just on this location when we do all the park and recs activities?
No, we have, well, the mostly, most of the camps are actually held at the school district.
Right.
Okay. Let me, let me bring up Megan. She can give you a little bit more better insight.
All right, Megan. There we go.
Good evening, everybody. Hope you're all having a good evening.
Good evening, thank you.
Um, I know we all love talking about money. So, um, yes, last year in 2020, we were restricted to use only our building, which was very frustrating, cut a lot of our programs. We try to work within the community to use whatever we can. So, we're back in the school district, but again, we're limited. And I also wanted to mention that we try to use any space we have. As you all know, we do not have a community center. We have our community rooms. We're trying to clean up Clark at the moment, so we can use that program, you know, before it gets too cold. I wanted to mention that Glenn has graciously let us use his fire hall. We have dance classes in there now. So, we're trying to utilize anything we can to have classes for the community. So, that's where we're looking. The school district has been very gracious. As you may or may not be aware, the district is on a schedule for redoing gyms and things like that. So, everything gets moved around. And some Newtown residents might not want to drive to Holland Middle School. They want to have classes at Newtown Elementary. So, we're also constricted to what the school district's doing. So, that's where, again, you know, I gave Mr. Lewis a very conservative number. Obviously, I'd love to surpass that. But, you know, being what we are setting our own goals in the department, you know, we're looking at revamping some classes and focusing on ones that we know the community is trending towards, things like that. So, that's where we're coming from in Park and Rec.
Thank you. And Megan, you're, how long you been here now?
Before or now? Um, I've been here about six months.
Okay. Well, thank you for giving us that detailed report. Very spirited.
I'm excited.
Yeah, I love that. I need that passion around here. So, thank you so much. Thank you for being positive and smiling.
Thank you. Any other questions, gentlemen?
Just that surveys have always shown, have recently shown that our rec department is like something that people are very satisfied with and very happy with in the community.
Thank you. I'm very happy with Mr. Lewis's comments on the department, too. Matt, Jerry, and Janice are amazing. They've been excellent, so, thank you.
Megan, before you go, can I ask a question?
Yes.
On the park improvements, item on the budget, and there's like $550,000 in 2021, $922,000 in 2020, $550,000 in this budget. In those past two years, the estimated year-end spend was zero. Why aren't we, we got money budgeted? Why don't we spend money on improvements? What kind, what's happening with that?
Ms. Rose?
So, those numbers, those figures that you're reading, those were for, those were not figures allocated for the Lower Dolings Trail.
Just that?
Yes.
Okay. And so, in 2022, you have $550,000?
Right. That's because we, the other half of it is paid for by that grant, those grants.
So, it's not gonna really extend the trail all the way up to where you want it to go?
No.
Which is Lower Silver Lake Road or something?
That's correct.
So, in 2022, it won't go that far?
No.
Okay. Did I have anything else? Cable franchise money. Ah, man, I was surprised to see, how much money do we get for that? Over $300,000? And, you know, none of that money is actually used to improve the public room and the equipment and so on, as in other townships, like, I know Wrightstown uses its franchise money to get the latest equipment.
That's, it's revenue that goes into the general fund.
So, this money comes from me, for example, I pay $300 a month to FiOS for cable TV, which I probably don't even watch that much. I do YouTube now. But part of that is added into our bills. Each person who has a cable TV is specifically added.
That's correct.
Unfortunately, I don't get these bills in paper anymore every month, so I don't get to see the line items. And, but that money just goes into the general fund to use for however we want.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And the cable franchise agreement is still being negotiated?
The Verizon agreement with the Bucks County Consortium was approved. The agreement with Comcast is still being finalized with Coen and Associates. I think it's important to note also that Verizon has indicated that in the next four years, they will be out of the cable industry. So, that,
Streaming.
Amount of revenue will, will probably decrease.
More and more people are streaming. Okay. Any other questions for now? My, my last one is, is like a wrap-up question anyway. So, if we follow the schedule that you have for adoption, what are the options and restrictions we have for making modifications to preliminary budget once there is a preliminary budget, not a ma- major budget?
So, the total amount of the budget cannot exceed 10% of what's, what is included in the preliminary budget? And each, each major category cannot, cannot be increased by more than 25%?
How about decreases?
You're talking about after it's hung?
Yes.
I see.
How about, how about decreases?
Decreases are unlimited.
Okay. So, 10% overall, you can make changes throughout the, the budget, and as long as it doesn't come out to, to?
Increase, correct.
Yeah, increases. Higher than 10% of the overall budget.
Then it would just need to be re-advertised again, yes?
Yep. And 25% of a?
Major category.
Major category. Okay. Keep that in mind.
Maybe since the chief, Herron, is here, and he may not be at the next meeting, can I ask one more question?
Sure.
I'm always interested in the new building that the chief would like to erect. Would you like to speak a little bit about that? And the $25,000 for a study? What do you, what do you expect to get out of this study?
Good evening, gentlemen. What I'm seeking for is an analysis from professional engineers that would give me an overall analysis of square footage that a police department of our size technically needs for evidence retention, workspace capabilities, locker room capabilities, kitchen areas. Our building, it was initially the township building. It was rehabbed into a police facility. As you know, we are an accredited agency. We've been accredited three times. It is very important that we show, or showcase our police department operating in the most effective and efficient way possible. The setup of the building is a lot of configurations with small rooms and add-ons and additions, and it's not conducive to proper management of the police department.
Uh, right. I've been, I've been there, and you wouldn't let me ride the elevator. So, okay. But, so they're like architects mainly who are providing this report?
That, that would be the, the projection, that we would contact vendors that actually have an experience in dealing with municipal buildings, in particular, police building facilities.
I mean, why don't we just get a proposal from firms that do this? I mean, we need to have a request for a proposal. So, is this helping you develop a request for a proposal down the line, perhaps?
We can, we can propose any item that we want, but I don't have the expertise or knowledge to determine how many square footages we would need per officer. And you'd be looking for a 30-year project, something that would, we would last for 30 years and, and not be piecemealed together. And I don't have that expertise. That's where you would need the expertise to come in from the vendors that would propose us a reasonable solution for our problem.
Well, I'm just looking at this $25,000 budget item. I'm trying to figure out what do we actually get for that? And it, I was thinking it would help us come up with what we need to ask for when we go out for proposals. This, wouldn't that be?
That, that's correct, sir. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else, Joe?
I'm good, thank you. Chief Herron? Uh, the last question I have on this subject is to the members of the board. I, I would like to be able to share this document, the manager's budget, with the finance committee. And I'd just like the board's consensus to be able to do that. Okay, he's calling.
I'm fine with that, as long as they're part of the public, it could be shared with the complete public.
Sure. Well.
It's, you're talking about Mike's presentation?
Mike's presentation?
That he just made.
Yeah. To the finance committee.
Well, if it's gonna be the finance committee, they're just, they're not official. They're just part of the public. So, if they get it, everybody in the public should be able to have access to it.
It's a draft, right? So?
This is not a draft.
This is a draft.
Official board.
Which one are you talking about?
We're talking about Mike's presentation, what he just read, which anybody can record and then put into paper form.
I'm referring to this. Are you referring your?
No, I'm not referring to that.
No, I'm talking to Mr. Fisher. Mr. Fisher, is this what you're talking about, sharing with the finance committee?
I'm referring to both.
Okay, both. Okay. Well, it's a draft, right? So, what's the proper protocol for that, when you're, in terms of sharing it to the public?
So, if I may, the report that was accompanied with the draft budget, that can be made a public document. I essentially just stood here and read it. So, that, to me, is not a work product of the board. However, the draft budget, the, the bigger overall document is still a draft document, and it hasn't been, action hasn't been taken on that item, on where to send it.
Okay. I mean, I?
Does that make sense?
I think that having the manager's budget, what you read, will get us started. And by that time, we'll have a preliminary budget.
Yeah, and if, if the board wants to at, at the next meeting, you can make a motion to send it wherever, or make it public, or whatever you want to do with it.
Okay. Very good. I think I have an understanding that we can share the manager's narrative.
We'll get it posted online.
Good.
Mr. Lewis, I have one last question. I know that we've made some new hires over, from 12 months ago, or, or budgeted to go in this year, effective this year. How has, how has that been for our township building in terms of production and also the benefit to the residents?
So, well, I mean, Catherine has, has helped me tremendously since, since she came here. I mean, I know the chief had three additional officers this year in the budget, along with several replacements. So, I think the, the staff that we've been able to acquire this year, Ms. Brusinski included, has greatly enhanced the experience of residents. I mean, we have more diverse park and rec programming. We have more extensive community policing and relationships. We have quicker response times to complaints and to concerns from the manager's office. So, with the increasing in staffing, what you see is a faster and more efficient turnaround of, of a product.
So, you would consider it a very good investment?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oxley. Okay. I think that concludes the presentation of the 2022 Manager's Recommended Budget. We have a couple more agenda items. One is new business. Is there any new business? Any old business? All right. Then we come to number four, which is public comment. Do we have anybody, anybody in the audience that has some public comment this evening? Please come forward and state your name and where you live and?
Gian Filios, Newtown resident for 25 years.
Okay.
I have four short comments. One is about our township, can you hear me? Our township services. And the other three are about possible township energy systems. Uh, my first comment is about the fire services to the borough. I know this is a tough issue, but I think, excuse me, that it's time to offer them a service contract. And the figure of $250,000 came up at one of these township meetings, supervisors' meetings, is a fair share of the cost that the fire department has to bear. And I think you could offer them some quarterly payments due at the beginning of each quarter, and have 30 days to pay. And if they don't pay it, then it's they, it's their choice that they're to want the services. So, that's one comment. The next one is about energy systems. And I would love to see that the township entertain the idea of electric vehicles for, for some of their fleet. As we phase in new vehicles, perhaps we should look into the costs of, of possible electric substitutes instead. And perhaps even have an electric charging station at the municipal complex. The second one is the possibility of solar energy for township buildings. That's another possibility. That's a, that could be a real energy-saving, cost-saving, long-term possibility. Uh, and the third one is, energy system is LED lighting. And I know John Mack has been working on this for quite a while, and I think it's really time that we look seriously into it. There can be great cost savings, and it could be environment, environmentally friendly as well. So, it would be a win-win situation as long as we can buckle down and, and decide we want to do it. And I have some advantages of LED lighting, so if you'd like to hear them? Yeah? Okay. LED light lifespan is two to four times as long as other light bulbs. LED is energy efficient. Most LED retrofits result in 60 to 75% improvement in the overall energy efficiency. Improved safety. LEDs emit no forward heat. While traditional bulbs like incandescents convert more than 90% of their total energy directly to heat. And they can work on low voltage electrical systems because of that. LED lights are physically small. This makes them adaptable to any number of different lighting applications. So, it could be more than traffic signals and, I'm sorry, street lighting. They have dimming capability if you have the, if you acquire the special hardware. They have dimming capability if you have the, if you acquire the special hardware to do that. They generate, it's called directional emissions, which means instead of having light come out 360 degrees, it's only 180 degrees. And this, if you have to have shields around a light bulb, then it's going to cost you more to, to redirect that heat, the way, light the way you want to do it. So that, that, those kinds of frameworks can drive up the cost of, of street lighting. LEDs are environmentally safe. They do not have fluorescents or mercury vapor lights, which require special handling at the end of their life. They turn on and off simultaneously. They don't need any warm-up period, as in case of some lamps. They emit the vast majority of their energy in the visible spectrum and none in the ultraviolet spectrum. This means that LEDs are able to safety, safely and reliably illuminate UV-sensitive items like art that can break down over time. And I have personal experience with having used full spectrum lighting for that purpose. LEDs operate on very low voltage. They operate well in cold and hot temperatures. And they can be purchased in various color temperatures, yellow glow or cool white light. And I understand that insects prefer yellow and some people prefer yellow. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Filios. Yes. Please state your name for the.
Peter Gillis. I live in Newtown Grant. What a coincidence, two people want to talk about LED lighting. And since you guys are talking about numbers, I'll talk about LED lighting numbers. I was able to get some information off the township website about the annual expenditures for lighting, streetlights. It's not a big issue of fire departments or police departments, but I think as a line item, it's definitely something you guys should look at for saving some money. And just really quick with my calculations. It looks like the budget was $180,000 annually for the utility maintenance and repair for the street lighting. LED lights are between 25 and 50% efficiency. Just take a 10-year timeframe, you could look at saving quarter of a million or more in costs. So again, we heard a little bit about what the benefits of LEDs are. It's true, and I've noticed that Newtown is behind in, in the other townships, but they're, they've already upgraded and they're enjoying the benefits of savings. So it was, it interested me to see, to see the other township do it. I hope Newtown sees the same benefits. Thank you.
May I can I make a comment? I think we did ask Mr. Lewis to look into this at the last meeting, having to talk to the agency that is, the consultants that were handling this for other townships. Is that correct?
Yes, that's been given to Vienna.
Sorry, I didn't hear you.
That's been given to Brenning and Burke, they're the township's lighting consultant.
Okay, so maybe they could give us a report on that the next board meeting? Possibly, can we ask them? Definitely to give us a report?
And if they don't, as soon as possible.
Well, I'm asking them to do it definitely by next week. They can't do that?
We can, we can ask.
Thank you.
I think it depends on if they can get that back in a timeframe. So I, I think that you should have the expectation that they will do their very best, but they're working on it, correct? All right, thank you.
And Mr. Gillis, you have some, you have at least one advocate here and I think there's at least one other one, so for certainly looking into it and proceeding as we may. Any other business this evening? Any other public comments? Seeing none, I'd like to again, thank everyone for being here. Thank all the staff for coming in on an evening. And everybody enjoy their, rest of their evening. Thank you.